All right. The meeting of Shreveport City Council meeting now been called to order. We will have an invocation by Councilman Green and Councilwoman Fuller will lead us with the pledge.
So to pray, thank you God for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We actually come in our midst and search our heart, souls and minds with the supplement that's laid real in us with our Holy Spirit. As we attempt to handle city business and the needs of the citizens and of this city, we actually, you would guide us and help us through this. We know that only you can. We pray that this meeting will be in the manner that you would have it be there. At the end of the day, we'll be able to give you some glory in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
With allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll please?
President.
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 Here.
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 Here. Now, a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'm sorry, but tomorrow, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of, for the last meeting on the eighth and the ninth. Has any council member had been awarded recognitions or esteemed guests at this time?
Yes.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the mayor and council members. On another part of the model that I was making for Crime Initiative, I have members of the...
For the order, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Councilman Green. Would you all please speak up so the people in the audience can hear because I'm struggling here.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. After Sunday, I've been used up my... This was, this is my Monday voice. I used it all up yesterday, but I'll get in the mic. I've been trying to get our cordless mic down here, Jane, but I just... But a part of my presentation on the Crime Initiative, I have a group from Homeland here that would like to do a presentation for us, and I'd like that you all would come up now and do that presentation. Patrick is the leader, and they'll come now and do a short presentation. Thank you. They will introduce themselves and tell you all about their company and what they do and the cities that they have been very effective in.
Well, thank you, City Council members, and with special thank you to Councilman Green for his invitation to speak. My name is Patrick White. I'm a security consultant with Homeland Safety Systems. We are a state contract, brand-name manufacturer for surveillance systems that were headquartered right here in Shreveport, 724 West 61st Street, Council, or District B. With me today is Tommy Hancock and Mike Elliott. Mike's the Vice President of Homeland Safety. Tommy is a security consultant with us. Tommy is retired from the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Department. He's also retired from the Louisiana State Police Department, and he's retired from the U.S. Federal Marshal's Office from Western Louisiana. And I'm actually going to have Tommy speak briefly on his experience using camera systems to help expedite solving crimes and how they could also benefit the city of Shreveport and the police department. Turn over to Tommy.
Councilman Bowman, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Like you said, my name's Tommy Hancock. I've been very blessed and fortunate to retire from law enforcement after 45 years with different agencies. As you can probably tell from my haircut, that I'm a retired cop. And I've enjoyed every minute of it. Don't have any regrets about it. But now I'm a security consultant for Homeland. Homeland Safety Systems is the leading designer and manufacturer of surveillance systems in Louisiana, Arkansas, and Mississippi, but the corporate office is right here in Shreveport. So we specialize in total security solutions. Primarily, we've had three targeted clients, which were courthouses, schools, and jails. And we still do those, still do probably 50 or 60 or maybe up to 100 of those. But here in the last couple of years, we've started to focus more on neighborhoods, city parks, convention centers, things of that sort, because that's just been where the need that the city or the municipalities have decided they needed that additional protection. This is not to replace security officers or police officers. It's simply a supplement to the police officers. But I mean, what do you need the security systems for? You need it to protect your citizens, protect your neighborhoods, protect your assets, protect against lawsuits. And if we're talking about assisting in crime reduction, you use it to deter crime, similar like you would a police officer or a police car in a neighborhood. You use that to deter crime. You use video footage to solve crime. Secondly, you use it to solve crime by taking that saved footage and pass it on to investigators or police officers to help in solving those crimes. And you also use that saved footage for forensic evidence to help in the prosecution, and then you have that footage to use for forensic evidence. But as I say, it's used as a supplement to reduce crime and protect your neighborhoods. And that's obviously what each one of you are here for, to protect your citizens, protect your neighborhoods, and manage the affairs of the city. So just for an example, if you took a million dollars and you hired police officers, you might be able to hire 25 police officers, and then you got to go through the recruiting, the hiring, the training process. And then that police officer may just work one eight-hour shift, but you would need three to four police officers to work one 24-hour shift. Whereas if you took that same, just say, million dollars, you could buy 200 cameras and use 24-hour, 365-days-a-year coverage. So you see the benefit of it. But again, it's to supplement and augment the investigators and the police. Like I say, we probably do most of the schools, many of the sheriff's offices, courthouses across Louisiana and Arkansas. I have some brochures. I didn't quite bring them up, but I'll be glad, Mr. Chairman, to leave these with you and give you some more information on that. We'll be glad to answer any questions. Pass it off to the Vice President, see if he wants to add anything.
I really don't have a lot to say, other than thanks for the opportunity for us to come in and present about the company to y'all. We do expand outwards from what he was telling. We did cut our teeth on children. That's what we really set out to do, is protect children. And then, of course, we're in the jails and everywhere else. We do a lot of the work for the sheriff here in Shreveport. We do CCC. We protect those facilities here. We do Bossier Parish. We do more jails and more schools in state Louisiana than anybody else. We've recently opened up in the Mississippi and Arkansas. One of the stories about, that I would like to mention, was about three years ago at a Chief of Police Convention, I met Chief Crawford from Lafayette, and he had an ideal of how to protect certain areas of the city of Lafayette. And we went to work helping him design and put up cameras throughout some very bad sections of his town. And he explained to me that normally when they had something bad happen, it all went back to certain areas. But once it got to certain areas, they, it sort of dissipated. They couldn't get any information. Nobody saw anything. Nobody did anything. It took several months. We designed and built bulletproof boxes. That's how bad it was. When we installed those boxes in those neighborhoods, we had armed police officers to protect us while we put them up. The first six months that we had them installed, just part of them, the first six months, they saw 47 major crimes. Three of them were murders right there in those subdivisions. No one saw anything, but the officers were able to use the footage, take care of the crime, get the person off the street that caused the crime, even with the point of, I talked to the detective, and he said, "Mike, I talked to one of the guys," and he said, he didn't see anything. I said, "But in the camera you were standing right over here when it happened." And he looked at him, and he said, "Look, my children live here. I didn't see anything." And we would be the same way, but this takes it out of their hands. When you give the officers another avenue to be able to get that element out of those neighborhoods, I'm going to fast-forward you 10 months later, they were receiving phone calls from the other neighborhoods in Lafayette, "When can y'all put cameras in my neighborhood?" When you have that type of tool, it will help your citizens to live the life that we say we want them to live, that they should be able to live. Get the element out. Give the tool to the officers that need it, and let's live our lives. Thank y'all for your time. Y'all take care and God bless.
Again, I'd like to thank you all, Patrick, for coming for the presentation, and thank you all for your attention, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a quick, another quick presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, and Council. My name is Mike Burney. I represent Acadian Ambulance Service. This is Justin Back. He is also representing Acadian Ambulance Service. And we were just here wanting to introduce Acadian a little bit to the council, and we're going to be brief and hard to be brief about the company. But we are a 48-year-old company that was born here in Louisiana. We have units for emergency and non-emergency in the state of Louisiana, Texas, Tennessee, as well as Mississippi. And just wanted to come up and on behalf of the 4,000 employee owners of the company, just let you know that at this point in time, we will be filling out the necessary paperwork and going through the necessary ways to ask for a permit to operate here. And I'll let Justin explain a little about why now and why here.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gents, Mr. Mayor, as Mike said, we've been operating for 48 years in the state of Louisiana. Shreveport remains the only metroplex that we haven't looked to operate in before. Of recent times, we have taken over management of Life Air Rescue on the first of this month, and our strategic partnership with Ochsner is another reason why we sort of came before to discuss the opportunity for us to come up here. We would appreciate the chance to answer any questions you have, the chance to come in and be here at the meeting tomorrow, but we do request the opportunity to be given to COPCN and to service the citizens of Shreveport. Thank you.
If you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that I appreciate Acadian's interest in serving our community. The company has a startling reputation, and I understand from a brief conversation I had with a member of the administration at Ochsner's this morning that they would very much like to have Acadian support here, so I hope the council will give this its consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What else? Thank you.
One real quick question. We spoke, and just for the record, I would like, you know, what is your initial footprint going to be here, just where everybody kind of knows exactly what y'all are planning to do?
Right. So initially, we would like to be here to serve our customer, which is Ochsner. And at that time, we're probably talking about two units that are staffed. One would work 24 hours around the clock. One would work 12 hours a day. That is the initial footprint, and again, it would be to service our helicopter service to give them the ground transportation that they're going to need in the area, as well as the non-emergencies for the hospital. We are in no means requesting or wanting to run 911 calls. That is not what, that's not what we're here for. You have a great service that handles that for you. But any way that we can be good civic partners with the fire departments or with other ambulance services, we would definitely look at ways to do that with them in cooperation with them and not necessarily in competition with them.
Well, you know, we've had one ambulance company here for probably the last 20 years, I would say. I think we discussed that when I met with y'all. I just want to make sure that I'm all for free enterprise and bring in, like I told you, new businesses coming, but I also want to make sure that we have the volume there that will not only keep our existing ambulance company in business, but also keep you in business. I want you to come up here and have enough business to sustain yourself. And, you know, I think with a smaller footprint of maybe one unit, possibly two, and a backup, it's not something that would affect our existing ambulance company. So I'm all for free enterprise and bringing in, you know, new companies to Shreveport. We welcome anybody wanting to invest in our city, but I just want to make sure that y'all are here and can sustain your company here.
Sure. Absolutely, and I appreciate that. And as we talked about, we would be willing to work with you to look at other ways that maybe we can support the system with that. So we are more than willing to work with the other companies that are here to see what we can do. The other company that is here to do that. That is not a problem, and that was something that we had mentioned to you, that is our plan. Again, what we told you about, you know, we're not going to come in here with a huge marketing force looking to... We're coming to here to serve our customer, which is Ochsner, and anybody else that had request us, not necessarily other way. And I think that when you add, again, our training, our training methods and stuff like that, some of the tools that we can bring to the table along with the other service, it's a win-win for the patient.
Thank you.
Any other council member have any distinct guess or...
I would just like to recognize Ms. Bessie Smith from the MPC. She's also my constituent. Just wanted to recognize that she's in the front row.
Ms. Bessie, how you doing? All right. Mayor Perkins.
I have no comments for today, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone have anything relative to property standards? Saying no, thank you, Mr. Harris, for your attendance.
I have one thing. There is a, I've gotten a complaint, and I'll try to get you the address, but there's a burned-up house on Harder's Crossing and North Ferry Crossing that burned probably about, I don't know, eight months to a year ago. And I've gotten some complaints about the yard looks... I went over there and looked at it. The yard looks like it's in pretty good shape, but the house is in pretty bad shape. And some of the residents are concerned about, you know, other things going on in there. So if y'all could go over there and look at it. I don't know the exact... You can't miss it. When you go in, it's on, there was no address on it. I think it's like 290-something, but it's right about where Plum Creek comes into Harder's Crossing on the left-hand side. If you pull in there, you'll be able to see it.
I'll check it out.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harris, at the intersection of Line and Linden Street, there is a house on the west side of that intersection, southwest side of the intersection, that has weed stalks up to your head. Been like that all summer, and if you've not already ticketed that location, perhaps you could do that.
Mr. Cog, did you have a committed report you want to do tomorrow? All right. And we should have got our actual financial reports, email from Ms. Jones. And Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
None that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
We have to follow a request to speak.
My name is Scott Sinclair. My address is P.O. Box 1026, Shreveport 71163. I know you guys have got a lengthy agenda today, and so we'll just take a moment of your time. This actually relates to the MPC appeals. It's case number 19-304 and 19-305. These deal with the Esplanade subdivision and the conflicting issue with the extension of 31-32. That'll be on your agenda tomorrow. I will not be able to be here tomorrow, and so I'm asking for some time to talk to you today. For each of you, I've given you a set of written comments, and what they do is they try to lay out some things that you probably don't know about 31-32. Number one, there's no need for 31-32. If you've heard about the project, you may know about the Stage Zero report. The Stage Zero report was issued several years ago. There's a traffic study related to it. It's the only traffic study that's ever been done. That traffic study shows that in the year 2032, in rush hour traffic in the morning, there will be a grand total of 20 cars on six miles, both ways, six miles, four lanes of interstate highway. They also show that in 2032, which was when the projections were made, that 93% of the traveling public will continue to use the existing route that goes down Flonelucas and turns on Louisiana Highway 1 to get to that part of town. Only 7% of the current traffic, if it existed today, and only 7% of the future traffic in 2032 would actually use that highway. So there's no need for the highway. Number two, and by the way, these are things that I don't think, I know a lot of you are new to the council. This is information that, to my knowledge, has never been shared with the council. So it's not like prior council members have received this information and decided what they decided anyway. This is new information to this group. Number two, there's no money for this highway. The second thing that you got in the package that I've delivered is the 2015 statewide transportation report. That's the plan issued by DOTD. On that plan, they have to prioritize things because there's not an unlimited amount of money to take care of things. So there's a priority A, a priority B, a priority C, and a priority D. Under the most aggressive scenario for funding, between now and 2044, there's enough money to do Plan A and Plan B, Priority A and Priority B. There's not one dime, not one dime for Priority C. 31-32 is in Priority C. And so what that tells you is that there's no plan whatsoever between now and 2044 for one dime of funding to extend 31-32 in the future.
I'd move to extend Mr. Sinclair's time, two minutes, given the fact that it's concerning the appeal.
Could we have a vote on that, please?
All right. I need a second, I mean.
I'll second it. I mean, the question is, for what purpose do you feel he need additional time?
He's a lawyer who is here today to discuss an appeal that's up tomorrow, and he can't be here for reasons of his own schedule, so I just think as a courtesy, we should allow him to finish his remarks. This is an important matter before the council.
One question about the councilman. He left us some materials. Do you think there would be advantage for us to also accept and read?
I think it would be reasonable to grant him an additional two minutes, Councilman, under the circumstances of just wanting to make the motion.
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and settled. Austin Cat, fail.
Thank you for your time, and you've got my written notes. Thank you very much.
I hope the district court reviewing our actions, Mr. Chairman, won't take that as a lack of interest in the appeal when it reviews the matter.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I didn't understand the statement.
Councilman Bradford, I indicated that I hope that the district court, which undoubtedly will review the actions we take on the appeals on the agenda tomorrow, does not take our unwillingness to extend Mr. Sinclair a two-minute extension of his time as an indication that we were not interested in the appeals or sufficiently focused on our responsibilities now regarding... Councilman.
We sat through this. He's telling us nothing that we're already, three of us have already heard.
I've never heard it, Captain.
And to say that there's no need for 31-32, somebody better tell N.L. Cog that there's no need for it.
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
To the mayor, council lady, and councilman, I am Bessie Smith, address 1810 Vikings Drive. We are concerned about the future of Stony Hill community. As far as we've read or looked at, there is nothing, nothing in the bond issue for the Stony Hill area. Our eyes open. Take a look at it for yourself. Let us all benefit from the bond because we are better together. We are aware of all of the money that is being spent in District B, but nothing in the Stony Hill and very little in the Valencia area. We have a problem with all of the streets and drainage. We have a problem with flooding on Viking and Martha Street, Boulevard Street, and the Service Road on Yuri Drive and East Washington Street. We are aware of the project on Zeke Street, a very much needed improvement in the Valencia area. However, there are streets in the Stony Hill community that need paving and overlaying. We are citizens with integrity. Please don't look over us again. Remember, we are better together. I have a question. According to documentation, what discussions were made with the citizens, the citizens in the Stony Hill area, and I'm going to say in the Valencia area, we have not had any input for as this bond issue? Now, I know a tool was made to the Cooper Road, Mr. Willie Bradford's area. That was very good, no problem with that, but why not a tool all over this entire city so you can get the input? We were just told about a meeting a few minutes ago, and I won't go into detail because it's supposed to start at 5:30. But I tell you what, not a citizen in the Stony Hill nor the Valencia area aware of it. But I want to leave you with this song. I want to let you know, I want to leave you in my closing. My God, don't want no cheating. My God, don't want no cheating. My God, don't want no cheating. God wants you to be fair to everybody. My God, want you to love everybody. And thank you very much.
Chairman, may I? I want to address a couple of things that Ms. Bessie said. One thing is it was very short notice on that meeting, and I apologize that you didn't get due service on knowing when the meeting was because I did set it up very quickly, and I apologize for that. You were right that you did not get proper notification that we're having that meeting today. I totally own that. But there was a member of your community that actually sat on the bond committee to represent your interests. But you are right, we didn't, there wasn't a thorough review of the district as far as those, as far as our needs assessment.
Okay, but let me say something to you.
Yes, ma'am.
At that meeting, we did have a representation. You was at our meeting when the representation from the Stony Hill area said they just passed out a sheet and say, "You all take this."
That's correct.
Okay, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I know that's not the way it was supposed to be done.
Well, I can't speak to the way it was supposed to be done, but I know that in prior years of a longer, more thorough assessment was made, that bond committee meetings have taken a longer amount of time in the past. You are absolutely right about that.
Okay, and as a council lady, I love you dearly. But as a council lady, I was so sure... But as a council lady, I was so sure that you would have some input on this bond issue.
Well, and that's why we're here today, because it's not done until we vote to submit it for review tomorrow.
Okay, and the Bible say whatever you do, you do it in decent and in order, et machete.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Bessie.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment to Ms. Smith as well?
Please, sir.
Uh, Ms. Smith, you, you're familiar with the process. Our council people have representatives. I had two representatives myself on the citizen bond committee. My department heads gave thorough briefs on, you know, what they thought should happen, and today we will see, the council will vote, and we'll see the support for this particular bond. But I will give you my word, and that minister and that bond, we will not forget about your neighborhood like we won't forget about any other neighborhood, no matter how the votes go today.
I appreciate you.
You will.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Mr. Howard Allen.
Could I pass a legislative's make and move for the way, I'd like to go last, please. Hello, my name is Edna Williams, my address is three thousand and six Waco. When Habitat for Humanity, uh, Northwest Louisiana was originally formed, the first neighborhood renovated in Shreveport was the Valencia Neighborhood Subdivision in Stony Hill area. Habitat built twenty-three new, new and remodeled homes in Valencia, except for one, one thing. The only way in and out of Valencia subdivision, Zeke Street, is a problem. It's a big problem, because it's not a safety place for anyone to enter this neighborhood anymore. You have a whole lot of traffic going on, you have kids getting off school bus, they can't, they, they afraid to even walk when they get off the school bus, because they're scared they're gonna get hit by a vehicle. There is no safe place to walk, then you have a bayou right here at the edge of the street. There is no safety rails or nothing. And I don't think it's fair that we have to put our children through this at all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Bear with me while I get my, yeah, I'll teach you a kid. My name is Howard Allen. I reside at thirty-eleven Dallas Street. I want to commend our council lady for the efforts she's put forth on behalf of our neighborhood. She did call and ask me who would I recommend for our bond committee person, since I was the last one that handled the twenty-eleven bond when Mr. Efferson was our council person. At that time, uh, Zeke Street received seventy-four thousand dollars for construction of twenty-four feet, I'm sorry, twenty-four hundred feet of unimproved road study. That twenty-four hundred feet was cost seventy-four thousand dollars and was designed phase only. I don't know why it was not funded in full. This coming bond that you're asking, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars, unless I'm misunderstanding, that's the largest bond in the history of this city. If that's so, as Ms. Smith had already alluded to, I don't see anything north of Yuri Drive that uncovers Stony Hill and Valencia. I'm not gonna repeat that, because that's self-explanatory. The last bond put a tremendous amount of money into District B, but it went for tourism. Tourism is fine, I mean, that's gonna bring dollars into the city, but that's not helping the homeowners or the subdivisions or the people who live here. Habitat for Humanity came in in the late nineteen-nineties and did a tremendous amount of work in the Valencia area. We were able to get General Motors to build two homes in our area. We've got a lot of press clippings that I'm sure he don't want to be bored with, but I do have one that stands out, and hopefully your camera will catch this. Habitat rebuilt the neighborhood. Habitat built twenty-three homes in the neighborhood. Were it not for Habitat, this neighborhood would not be here now. The petition each of you were handed by Mrs. Bogan, you should have copies of it in your I don't see you shaking your head.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. You've got two pages of signatures. You've got a complete self-explanatory, I don't repeat, self-explanatory petition. It's a safety issue. Why the previous mayor didn't address it, I don't know. But this thing has been tossed around and tossed around like a ship at sea for the last two mayors. I'm sure you're not waiting on a child to get hit, maimed, or killed on that street. The police chief behind me, I don't see him, but he-
Mr. Allen, I hate to interrupt you, but the chairman has reminded me that your time has expired.
I'm sorry, sir?
Uh, your time has expired, uh, and I'm, I'm duty-bound as vice chairman to call that to the council's attention, and so I-
Would the council please relent and give me a little more time to state my case?
May I ask you some questions? I can't, I can't extend your time, but I can ask you some questions, Mr. Allen.
Sure.
Um, we've talked about Zeke Street before, I know this has been an ongoing issue.
Yes, it is.
Do you remember, can you tell me what you remember from the last time Mr. Furlong came out and spoke about this?
He stated we were going to have to wait until a new bond issue was proposed, and hopefully Zeke Street would be included in that bond issue.
Now, the way that it's written right now, there's money that could be potentially earmarked per district for, to address needs in each district, and if that happens, this is something that I see as a priority. But as of right now, it was not something designated by the committee or by the staff as a dire need from the, from the, from the committee as it stood. But this is something that I do consider to be a safety issue, and people across the district agree with me, not just in the specific area. Is there anything you want to just address quickly before you-
Very quickly, uh, if you look at the petition as a whole, it's a five-page atomized request. I think the fifth page has a letter from the Shreveport Times that details Zeke Street specifically. The late Mike Strong was adamant in his helping the neighborhood to help itself. Whatever you can do to alleviate this problem, it'll only get worse. It's not gonna solve itself. We've come here to ask our elected officials, you particularly, Willie, because I've known you for years, and you've always been kind in helping people who spoke out to help themselves.
Okay, Councilman Budge.
Yes, sir, thank y'all for coming up. Um, I, I'm particularly concerned about, about Zeke Street, because it services three or four different streets, Dallas, Lufkin, Waco.
Beaumont.
And, and you have to get to it from Zeke Street. To me, the way the road goes there, and I think that's what the concern is, it's a danger, especially with kids cutting through, going to Magnet and the Montessori schools right there. That should be a high priority for the city to fix, because I don't know if any of you've ever driven that, but it's a blind, you go over the levee, it's a blind curve there, and very, if you didn't know that area or an inexperienced driver.
You wind up in the bayou.
There's, there's, there's a possibility you could end up in the bayou. So I think that that is a, I, I hate to say this, but I cut through there quite frequently, so I'm, I'm really familiar with it.
We welcome you.
Thank you, thank you. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, it's a very high-traffic area, so I, I would, you know, I would encourage, if, if each district does get a portion of the bond money, I would definitely encourage Councilwoman Fuller to, to put this as a top priority, because it is, it is dangerous. Something needs to be done there.
Yeah, it really does.
So thank y'all for coming, thank y'all for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford, yeah, Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me also, Howard, let me, let me also say that, um, two previous times, when Councilman Efferson, Councilman Efferson was here, Zeke Street was, uh, put on the agenda.
It was?
At that time, and he did say that, that, that the next bond proposal, that, that street should be considered. The reason that, that it didn't pass the previous times is that we want to repurpose it. Councilman Efferson's desire was to repurpose some money to put, I think it was over a million dollars, that would go to Zeke Street, and it wasn't equitable for the city or the other council districts to support that, because the need was, again, uh, the needs are great throughout the city. I would certainly encourage the council lady from the district to look at this again, because the pledge was once a bond proposal-
I've already said that this is a priority for me.
Okay, so, so if that's, if that comes before the council as a, as a request, then I would be candid to support that.
I thank you for saying that.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank the council as a whole for listening to us, particularly as a bald-headed old man, but, uh, we're gonna do what we can to help you to help us to make our neighborhood all that it can be.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, John Glover, eighty-one-hundred Pines Road, apartment three G, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-twenty-nine. I stand before you today with regards to my position on the impending approval or not of the bond issue. I do recognize that we do need a new Shreveport Police Department building. I also recognize that the training center may need to at least be considered in this proposal as well. What I had stated in a number of my Facebook posts is that I need to know the fullness of what you all are asking us, the citizens, to support in every aspect of the bond. That's with the funding, I think, if I'm not mistaken, um, Nicholas, excuse me, Councilman Nicholson asked a question when I was in the infrastructure meeting. If we awarded you ten million dollars, could you tell us what you're gonna use it on? Or no, why don't you tell me what you need, then I will decide if ten million dollars is truly adequate for what you're asking. I think the listing should be brought to you all with a price tag already on it, with every aspect that's going to be dealt with, with that price tag, not I give you a wish list and we hope you get the money. Now, I did and was able to get some information. City Attorney Smith Krill did, uh, supply me with that information, saying that it has been uploaded, excuse me, uploaded to your webpage whereby each citizen can, if they have access, gain knowledge of what you're asking us, the citizens, to support. Again, we don't want you to hurry through this just because you say it's an emergency. We want there to be indeed an emergency. We don't want to be like Smokey Bear. Let's, let's not not prevent this emergency, but let's prevent the emergency because we can. We don't have to wait until dire need in order to do something. When I heard of the tragedy or travesty of the, uh, building that the police, the police is in, I thought, how horrible, because it should have never deteriorated to such a stance. But then I have to also make sure that if it is that you or we give you our permission to get those buildings up and running, will there be a concrete guarantee that the maintenance will be done? Because we don't want to expend money after money for no reason, because it's all about us and you all. You provide a service to us, and we ask and expect that service from you all. But in doing so, we want to ensure that we understand fully what we're going to be asked to support or not, because ten to twenty years being tied to a price tag, then in the pretty picture. Again, thank you, Attorney Krill, for your help, and I look forward to seeing what you all have to give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
Council Mayor, thank you, Brian McNew, two-thirty-nine Albert in Shreveport. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. Um, I want to commend you for your efforts to represent us by working on this bond issue in this kind of rushed situation. I can see your efforts of working on this by the prioritization, prioritization of items on the list and listening to the great conversations between citizens, and then hearing you guys on radio and different media talking about this. As a lifelong citizen of Shreveport, I am proud of our area, and we do need to continue to invest in our infrastructure. I personally support this bond issue as a resident, a business owner, and a property owner. My question to the council, though, is regarding the line item budget costs for each project, are these line items current costs? Um, and have they been recently verified, and they, are they all-inclusive? I'm, I'm concerned about that. Typically, these budget line items include things like total project cost, property, professional design, construction, and furniture fixtures and equipment. And when submitting this, I just want to make sure that you guys have the total cost, whether it's three projects or thirty projects. Please make sure whatever it is that you get will be covered by the bond issue that you request, and we cover all the projects. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Ora Hart, sixty-nine-eleven Bethany Street, Shreveport, seven-eleven-zero-six. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, to all of councilmen, I was a little disappointed. I want to thank Mr. Nicholson for asking me to be a part of the meetings for this bond And I came out of it thinking that, wow, something is gonna happen here. And what I find is, is that it's impossible to get anything done in division. We have little meetings here, we have little meetings there, and we meet, and we think we've got something in writing, and we think we're going someplace, and we get back and we find out, hmm, that's not what we said. That's not what was supposed to happen. My grandmother, my mother always says, tell me, haste makes waste. So if we're doing what we're doing hurriedly, we might not get where we're trying to go. I think that the citizen has to get something out of this. I believe that we can't scare the people into thinking that we need this as opposed to needing that, and we, if we do this, then we're not gonna have police, we're not gonna have firemen, we're not gonna have. I think that's a wrong tactic for us to take. I hope that this council, Mr. Mayor, that we would take a real good look at Shreveport, what the citizens need, what the citizens want, what the citizens really must have. And when we do that, I believe that Cooper Road, Stony Hill, Cedar Grove, I think that we can all get a part of this, because if there is no, no jobs, no training, none of the things that the, that the people need, then there's gonna be more fires, more police. That's not what we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Casey Macbeth.
Casey Macbeth.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be as brief as possible. Casey Macbeth, home address 1820 Audubon Place and business address 3516 Mansfield Road, both in Shreveport. Valentine Ambulance has been providing non-emergency ambulance service for over 30 years to the city of Shreveport. We work very well with the Fire Department. Anytime that Chief Wolverton calls and they need any assistance, we provide it 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. It's interesting that you note, we have been serving LSU, University Health, now Ochsner, that same facility for over 30 years. We've not received any communication that there's any needs, that anywhere we can need, meet a need, an additional need. We already pick up air ambulance crews from downtown airport, Shreveport Regional Airport, Life Air Rescue, when it was previously another company. We met their crews at Will's Night and transport them to other hospitals all the time. Any things that brought, these are services we can provide. Thing just to remember is when you destabilize the ambulance market, it's very tempting to think more business, that it's going to be better, but this is a very specialized market that's regulated at the federal level and at the state level with reimbursement rates that are statistically 20% lower for non-emergency than what we get actually paid for the run. So, you're getting, you're actually doing the run for Medicare rates lower than what your cost is. So, when you bring in another provider, small, large, indifferent, you take away a different piece, you take the whole puzzle away. So, I'd like the council just to think about that in this issue that came up, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time if anyone has any other questions.
Councilman Butcher.
Thank you, Mr. Macbeth. I appreciate you coming and speaking to us. Right now, how many ambulances do y'all run in the city?
Right now, we have 18 medic units and also we carry, have seven paratransit vans.
How many employees do y'all have?
Fluctuates around the 90 mark, 75 to 90 mark, and that includes our dispatch center, our billing center, and all of our street crews. The other thing I would say, should say that is, you know, we pay use tax. Everything that we get, that we bill, any tax generated stays here in the community locally. Doesn't go anywhere else. It stays here in the community, and that helps us to be able to go and to do those other events that are pro bono to help the community out.
And what are some of those events? What do y'all do?
Both the Major Mardi Gras parades. We send anywhere from six to eight paramedic staffed ambulances, paramedic staffed ATV, command staff for both the Christmas or Crew Gemini parades. Our own 24-hour backup with the Shreveport Fire Department. Anytime they call for the 911 center, we dispatch truck immediately. No questions asked, no worry about payment. We take care of it because we want to take care of the community, we want to take care of the citizens. And our job is not primarily answering 911 calls, but we are all licensed the same, we are all certified the same. I'm a paramedic, just like Chief Wolverton's a paramedic. So, we took the same exact test, same exact patch, same exact class. So, the training crosses over. MCI disaster drills that come in this October at the Shreveport Regional Airport, they'll have their massive drill they'll need for FFA, excuse me, FAA certification, and they'll have anywhere from four to six trucks out there that won't be making revenue that will be helping assist to make sure that we get that check off that we need to keep the airport up to par and to keep the response for the parish and the city where it needs to be.
So, you feel like there's enough business, and we're not even to this point yet, I don't think. I just think that Acadian was coming to speak to us today to kind of tell us that Ochsner's had an interest, and I think that we ought to listen to any new business that comes to town. But do you feel like that Shreveport is a big enough market to support two ambulance companies?
No, sir, I don't. And the reason being, if you look at Will's Night and Health System, they have their own ambulances that do their own internal transport, so that takes a piece of that market away, and they have handled that. All the things they've talked about, we can provide. We'd love to have a sit-down discussion with the higher-ups at Ochsner's and be able to work out an amicable situation, if that is dedicating a truck to them. That's something we can talk about with them, but we haven't had any communication. The only communication we have had is with their case management staff and staff we work with on a daily basis and their middle administration to make sure that their daily needs are being met.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my requests to ask questions.
Councilman Green.
Thank you. If they came to town and started their business and they discovered that it was not enough business, they went out of business, how would it hurt your company?
For them to come in and go out of business?
If they came, if they-
Yes, sir.
-set up operation, say after a year, they decided that business was not feasible for them and they went out of business, how would it hurt your company?
Well, Councilman Green, there's a few different ways. One, we could have to scale back a little bit on the front side, means we'd have to lay off personnel, may have to get rid of equipment, and then if they decide we're out-
No, no. No, no, that's what I'm not, I'm saying if your business remained the same-
Yes, sir.
-and they came to town, but their business did not work-
Yes, sir.
-and they went out of business, how would it affect you?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying. We would continue our operations, but if there were any diminishment in the number of calls that we did-
No, no. No, what I'm saying is-
But to meet their need after they-
If your business stayed in business as it is-
Yes, sir.
-you lost no customers.
Yes, sir.
They came in town, but they didn't gain any customers, so they decided to go out of business. How would it affect you?
It would put an immediate hardship on us, because we would have to immediately staff up and get more equipment to handle those calls in immediate nature versus having a communication back and forth with the facility to get a gradual plan in place. That is one way. But the thing to remember about ambulance transports is they're regulated, so it's, there's no, there's not really a large fluctuation in those needs as far as your amounts. So, if another provider comes in, there will be a slight loss in transport numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Flair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Bradford, you know, sometimes competition is very good. It makes you get up in the morning, polish your shoes, put clean clothes on, be out there with new marketing tools and skills. So, you would agree competition is a very good thing.
I welcome competition, Mr. Chair.
And if you had an ambulance service, you'd have a helicopter, wouldn't you?
I would upgrade my-
You'd be bringing in the modern century.
I would upgrade my-
And so, the Indiana has helicopters, and they fly all over the state, and so, they're not the evil one here. This company here will be a better company. Wouldn't you agree, Councilman Bradford?
I think that competition is a win-win, because we compete, and being competitive is a positive thing to do.
Because, Councilman Bradford, every time the Fire Department transferred somebody that they should not according to the orders, Valentine gets paid. They hadn't missed a dime. Of course, they do help us, too. So, competition is a good thing. It's not an evil thing.
Councilman Flair, I agree with you, and I'm saying again that if, and I'm just saying if, there was an opportunity for another service to come into town, I think it would increase the awareness of what is needed, and I think both companies will adjust to that need in providing a quality ambulance service for this reason. I would say that Valentine has a brand. They have been very diligent in what they do.
Right.
I mean, we've utilized them personally as well as company-wide. But I'm saying again that whenever there's another company that does the same type of service or provides the same type of goods, it's always, in my background, in a positive adjustment.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
All right. Councilman Butcher.
Just to piggyback on what Councilman Green said, I don't see how, Councilman, that there's any way that their business would not be affected if Acadian came into town, because they're going to lose Ochsner's. That's the whole reason that Acadian would become into town, if I'm not missing this, right, is to service Ochsner's. So, the hypothetical that was just put forward, it wouldn't hurt your business at all. It will. I mean, they will probably have to lay some people off, and they will have to, and that's not, I mean, it's a bad thing to lay people off, but it's not a bad thing for competition. I agree with that. But they will have to restructure their business. I mean, how many runs do y'all make a day from transporting patients out of Ochsner's?
Well, the difference is there's-
I wouldn't give that information, because they may be-
I'm not, sir. I can't give that information, because there are certain runs that the patient's insurance takes care of-
Right.
-and that would not be listed in just that little bit.
But Pafford could come pick up one and take them to Mendon.
Yes, sir, do the current orders they could transport from Shreveport to a facility outside.
But it would affect your business if you lost Ochsner's?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only point I was going to make. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Chair. Mr. John Settle.
John Settle, for Tealwood. I'm not an expert on open ditches, other than trying to get myself out of them a lot, but I am concerned, it's a true statement, that one vocal group has indicated that there's one ditch that needs to be paid at $16.4 million. I was at the last meeting of the citizens' group. I heard that presentation. I heard it verbatim again by the same three people at the infrastructure meeting last week. I heard it verbatim by the same three people at a prior council meeting. We have open ditches, unfortunately, or the fact is throughout the city, no matter what district you're in. And I have some pictures here. If I can tell how to operate this. Well, I've given them to y'all anyway, and tech's not my thing, but they're all over the city, and it's a reality. And I'm not sure that taking $16.4 million to pay entirely an open ditch is a good expenditure. This is a picture of an open ditch near 12 Oaks. How about a picture of that? Okay. You know, thank goodness he has parents my age. Here's another open ditch that's at Live Oak and 12 Oaks. And here's another one at Spring Leg, Dunbarton, and West Wilderness. And here's one at East Bird Coons and Christus Highland. Another one at East Bird Coons and East Kings. And another one here. The point being is that citizens are entitled to make their presentations, and I respect that, but factually, I think they should be correct. And I think that some of the positions that were espoused by that group, I just don't think are correct. Throughout the city, we have open ditches. And I know that MLK needs a lot of work. I think streets are probably just as important or more so, but I just wanted to point out that we, that there are in other areas, and I'm not picking on anyone. I'm just trying to make a statement of fact that when you consider bond money, $16.4 million is a lot of money in one district for them. Thank you.
Hey, John, is that a Polaroid camera?
Well, you know, when I'm out cycling, it's not, it is a Polaroid. Now, you may have to explain that, what that is to Ms. Fuller, but it is a Polaroid.
That's Aegis.
Councilman Butcher. Mr. Settle, thank you. Most of these are in my district, by the way. I think that-
I cycle in your district, and I don't like going out there taking pictures like this, so it's in my cycling logs.
You know, I want to make this comment, because there were some things said in the infrastructure meeting, for those that weren't there, that were a little bit concerning to me. We have got to get over this. We're two Shreports, because we're not. We are all together. One comment was made, well, if it wasn't in a low-income neighborhood, we'd have a ditch. That's not true. I mean, my district and Councilman Bradford's district are very, very similar, and some of Councilman Flair's district. Our districts were annexed, laid in, we took in parish roads. I've got one street that leads to million-dollar houses that's one lane. People have to pull over, and it's almost gravel to get to. So, this is not just a poor, rich, white, black. This is a city of Shreveport issue, and I like the new proposal that people are coming, that the mayor's office sent us with, each district gets a certain amount of money, and we were able to kind of look at that and allocate it to where we need it to go, because we know our districts better than anybody, I would hope, or at least you should, or you shouldn't be in the office. But this is a very good point. I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't think that the maintaining of a ditch or any other city improvement has anything to do with your socioeconomic, social, whatever, with your, how much money you make. So, and I hope that we all can get past that and work together to give everybody an equitable chance in the city of Shreveport to be successful. Thank you, Mr. Settle.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford.
Yeah, Miss Settle, I want to thank you, because certainly I haven't visited or toured other districts. I'm very much aware of what's in my district, but-
You've got plenty to look at up there.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, some of the, I guess, the needs of these areas is needy as mine. But see, the problem, I think, is the neglect of the Cooper Road area for the longevity of what it had been there. But my concern, and I met with my residents of that area and others in my district last week, the question was, does this ditch problem contribute to flooding in the Cooper Road? Is it a cosmetic thing, a request, or is it to lessen or to resolve flooding? An answer is that, to my knowledge, and as I taught with engineering, that that ditch is not a contributor to the flooding of the Cooper Road. So, and I told the residents then that I work best when I'm working with the neighborhood groups up there. I have three. Each one of those, in addition to the residents that you were referring to, made their own requests for needs of that area to go into the bond package. So, I am looking at all the projects that we could sort of consider and not necessarily just-
If you had $100 million, you could probably take care of most of them, maybe in your district.
Well, I'm just saying again, you know-
I know. It's a tough job.
And I told them, and I tell the council, and I said it before, the MLK area was annexed into the city 40 years ago. And if that lasts 40 years, if we could have just done a little a year, do whatever resources that was available, we would not be in the predicament that we are now. We're going to do some things, some positive things. Hopefully, my review with the administration, as well as the engineer, have given me hope that we can make a dent in some of the shortfalls that has happened in the past. But I appreciate you sharing these pictures, because once I got them, I think Saturday, I had a chance to really look at the totality of the city and the needs of the city drainage system.
Thank you. Well, I've followed the council since we started. I think you've been the most effective, by far, of all the representatives up there, and you've inherited a mess, and I think you're trying to clear it up. And I appreciate the effort you're making for that area, which is for the entire city.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, John, for this. I really appreciate it, because my guests last night from Sunday to Sunday, and I wouldn't have been able to go around and see this, so I really-
I have a bicycle I run.
I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have no executive appointments to consider, and there are no items on considered agenda. Mr. Thompson, can you proceed with resolutions on Second Regent and Final Act? I'm sorry, Ms. Jones.
All right. Resolution 97, authorizing Northwest Louisiana Food Bank, represented by Ms. Martha Merrick at 8525 Whitener Lane, to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system.
Councilman, Mr. Chairman, we recognize-
Councilman Flair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't push, but I'm legal, man. I asked the council to consider supporting this. Food Bank has relocated out on Mount Sinai Road, and this is just trying to help them be in a better position to serve the needy, so I hope you'll support it, please.
Sit. Thank you, Councilman Flair.
Want to keep going, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Jones, continue.
Okay. Resolution 86 is proposing a co-text amendment to the Shreveport UDC for consideration by the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Resolution 95, authorizing the- Resolution ninety-five, authorizing the use of certain city-owned equipment by Junior League of Shreveport Bossier. Resolution ninety-six, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Providence House. Resolution ninety-eight, authorizing the release of the state fire marshal and any other state entity from responsibility or liability for inspections performed by the Shreveport Fire Department Prevention Division. Resolution ninety-nine, recognizing the outstanding service provided by Shreveport Police Jailers and Police Communications Officers to thank them for their service. Resolution one hundred, ordering and calling a special election to be held in the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, to authorize the incurring of debt and issuance of bonds therein, making application to the State Bond Commission. Resolution one oh one, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the five thousand block of Greenwood Road in honor of the late Reverend Dr. Leonard Williams, Sr. Mr. Chairman, on resolution ninety-eight, we would like to provide an amendment to the title. Right now, it says, "A resolution authorizing the release of these entities from liability," and the city attorney has advised us that it should say, "Authorizing the mayor to release these entities from responsibility."
Okay.
Is that a two-reader?
It is a one-reader. It's saying final passage is August the thirteenth.
Ninety-eight. She wants to change the title, probably.
Mr. Chairman.
If I may interject briefly, I did discuss with the city attorney the fact that this resolution, as presently presented, would have the council releasing the state fire marshal when that is an authority or privilege that rests with the mayor. And I don't see any problem with amending the title, but we probably could just substitute the document and leave the title as it is, since it doesn't indicate whether the council or the mayor is doing the releasing. But I'll leave that to the parliamentarian over there.
On ninety-eight, I think we would need to add the new resolution tomorrow.
Okay.
Because the title has changed, and we didn't, that wasn't included in the twenty-four-hour notice.
So it would need to be added to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have it tomorrow, is what you're saying?
Right. We'll provide the revisions and ask for it to be added on tomorrow. Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I intend to withdraw resolution eighty-six from consideration completely because reasons.
Okay, tomorrow, you're going to remove it from the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have additional remarks tomorrow concerning resolution one hundred, but for today, I just would like to clarify with the city attorney's office that the agenda includes the resolution, which has an exhibit A, which is referenced in the resolution, and there also is a 2019 bond proposal exhibit that is not referenced in the resolution. I understand that the 2019 bond proposal exhibit, which lists the projects that the administration has proposed we spend the bond money on if the bond passes, is for informational purposes only and will not itself be adopted if the council approves the resolution tomorrow. Is that correct?
That is correct, since it is not referenced in the resolution. If the resolution is adopted, that ordinance that is just there for informational purposes will not be a part of the resolution adopted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On my resolution on tomorrow, I'll give an update as to what it's all about.
Very good. Thank you. That's great.
Ms. Jones, please proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. You're on the board.
Yeah, I was, thank you. And I'm just going to exhort the council members that we will support the resolution to offer this to our citizens. It in no way, and I told my constituents, and some of them felt somewhat disrespected at the work that they put in on the bond committee, and some of the recommendations that they put forward has been modified and in some cases eliminated. But I wanted them to know, and I told them, as well as those who attended the infrastructure committee meeting last week, that this body, this council, will have the final say on any suggestions, recommendation that came before us regarding this bond proposal. There's no question that the needs of this city is great, and I saw, in working with the administration for my district, whether the effort, the effort to be very inclusive is there. And I want the citizens an opportunity to consider these that we move forward. I appreciate the fact that the amount was modified for this reason. We again fight feedback about the cost. And in my household, I could say without reservation that we live within our means. I think the proposed bond proposal now is within our means at this time. And I think we can readily go out and exhort and make justifications on why we can do this. Even, you know, if we put this to a vote tomorrow and we approve it, again, it in no way guarantees anything. It just guarantees that the citizens would vote on it, but we will have ninety days after tomorrow to make our case to the citizens on why we think this should go, or if we don't think it should be approved. But I just want to thank those that participated in this process, and also to those that had opportunity to reconsider some things and to be reasonable and prudent as we move forward to the citizens for consideration. I never thought that sixteen million dollars was appropriate to put into a ditch. I viewed that whole area today. I rode it up and down, looked at all the aspects of that waterway, given the other requests of services that is needed in my district. And I feel very confident that what we are proposing is a good start to move that district, that area of Shreveport, forward in better living conditions for those residents. So I'm gonna ask that, you know, we definitely support putting this on the ballot so it may go forward to the voters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Green?
I think this is a good spot for me to discuss this. I've talked to several of my colleagues about this. I think maybe the only one I didn't get to speak with about it was Councilman Bradford, because I didn't see him. I did ask you about it. Anyway, somebody contacted me, and this may be a Shelley Ragel question, and I also talked to an architect that's here that I might ask a couple of questions if the council will allow me to do that. But somebody brought this to my attention last week in a meeting, that the old Center Point building at five twenty-five Mileum is available. They've moved out pretty much all of their people. And Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm just now getting this to you, but Chairman Boden and I spoke about this. So today, I had an opportunity to go and tour it along with an architect. No fee to the city, I wanted his opinion on what it would take to get this building up and running. And the building itself is, there's fourteen floors at about twelve thousand square feet per floor. It is in immaculate condition. It has all of the, I don't know, Keith, you'll have to, what all that stuff is. It's got this room that has all these raised floors with air conditioners pumped through it, and I mean, so-
Halon, Councilman.
Well, it's got the halon system. I think that's the system that puts the fire out. But anyway, we walked through it, and the building is in excellent condition. In fact, I believe the police department could be moved there today with very little space. One thing I heard in the public safety meeting from, I don't know, is the chief back there? I have a pole, I can't really see, but Chief Smith voiced a concern about parking. Anyplace we went, we need parking. This has over forty to fifty parking spots behind the building. It has an eighteen-spot parking garage underneath, which could work for a Sally Port to bring people in. It also has an adjacent parking lot on Marshall Street that has fifty parking spots in it that comes with the purchase of this building. The thing I'm so excited about the building is, the purchase price is two million dollars. I like that it's right across the street from the Cato Parish Courthouse, it's within walking distance to Government Plaza. It also is right across the street from the DA's office. I wouldn't expect the administration or Ms. Ragel to know about this, or the police chief for that matter, because I thought that was still full of people, and it's not. And just by chance, I had lunch with the gentleman the other day, and he told me about it, and things just kind of started rolling. But I would like, you know, we hear about remodeling and everything, and I don't know the specific needs that y'all need, chief, but there are open floors that could have cubicles in it, there are floors that already have offices in it, there's downstairs area with an auditorium. I mean, it's, I don't know, I mean, it looks like it would meet the needs of the police department. I'd like, if the council doesn't mind to bring Brian McNew up, Brian has worked on several city projects, and if y'all don't mind, I'd like to just ask him a couple of questions, and his professional opinion of what he thinks it would cost to get that retrofitted to a police station. Brian? Brian, what was your overall assessment of the building?
Well, the building is in very good shape. It has three, in addition to what Councilman Butcher said, it has three backup generators. In the computer center, when we were getting the tour, they were telling us that the computer center is one of two or three that controls all of Center Points, this one of their mirror sites. So this entire floor has, I believe it was, two thousand tons of cooling in it, HVAC cooling, along with, that's all on the emergency backup, which, you know, could serve your downtown technology needs as a piggyback, and you could double-dip with the facility. The restrooms that we toured in appeared to all be ADA accessible. The boilers and chillers, the maintenance guy that was in charge of the building, he gave us a tour from top to bottom. There might be some roof repairs that need to be done, but the boilers and chillers are relatively new within the past five to ten years. Fresh air requirements are made, complied with, with the mechanical code already. Those are brought in and dehumidified and chilled to each floor. Great building, it's in great shape. I would say that it is, some floors are move-in ready with just establishing cubicles. It's got great infrastructure.
And your experience is what, just for everybody to know?
As far as what?
Well, I mean, how many buildings have you done for the city over the years?
Well, I've, let's see, I've renovated fire stations eight, five, and eleven. I designed Station Twenty, Twenty-two, Thirteen. We've, out of a lot of businesses, we're doing the GSA, some work for the GSA, the DEA in Louisiana Tower. We've done, we're doing the Sheriff's Substation in Stonewall, so we have a good bit of experience.
And I just wanted to let everybody know that you're not just saying this because, you know, you know what you're doing when it comes to this.
And we've renovated, right now, we're doing a fairly complex renovation for GSA in Louisiana Tower, and it's a fully occupied floor, and we're having to do it in three phases. And that one has a lot of requirements on it, but with regards to renovation costs, I would guess if you did a full gut of a floor, which you wouldn't need to at the Arkla Building, you're looking at a fifty to sixty dollar a square foot range. That is, if you did a full gut. If it didn't, it could be less than that.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Councilman Nicholson.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's taken me about eight months to realize that we're not all gonna agree about everything up here. I've got that lesson now. But I will, but I say to my colleagues and to the mayor that- After touring this building with Councilman Butcher this afternoon at his invitation, I really do think this is something that we should give serious consideration. You know, we've got twenty million dollars budgeted. I don't think you can pass a cookie by me without offering one.
Yes, I can. I've accounted everything.
We've got twenty million dollars budgeted in this bond proposal for a new police station. If we could buy this building for two million dollars and then spend, you know, say, eight or ten million dollars renovating it, we'd save millions of dollars of public money. And as Councilman Butcher said, there are floors in the building that really are move-in ready. And as we discussed previously, even if this bond were to be approved tomorrow and voters passed it in November, we wouldn't have a new police station for two or three years. Having toured that police station with Councilman Butcher and with Ms. Ragel, my sense is that we have to take immediate action to get our officers out of the worst parts of the police station. Buying this building at a very reasonable cost would allow us to do just that. So I appreciate Councilman Butcher taking the initiative on this, and I fully support our exploring possible acquisition of this building.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I don't want to take credit for this, because it kind of fell into my lap, and I apologize, Shelley and the mayor, that I didn't get with y'all on it, but this happened within a matter of hours this morning. Somebody called me and said, "Do you want to look at it?" And I was like, "Sure, let's go look." And so anyway, that's kind of where it came. I see it as another aspect for the downtown area. Bringing in all those police officers to the downtown area does two different things, I think. I think it kind of helps with safety downtown, but also kind of infuses the downtown area with walking traffic that I think we all really, really want, you know, people walking to lunch and doing exactly what we see envisioned for our downtown, not to mention a hub for Mr. Hanson to do some things with down there. I mean, it was very, very impressive. And I look at a lot of real estate, I've bought a lot of real estate, but I was very impressed and hopeful. If we can save, you know, ten million dollars even on this project and get the police someplace in an immediate, you know, timeframe, I think it's a great, great idea. And that also gives the chief more money to look towards mounted patrol, which is extremely important. OSI building possibly helped with starting on, even though I know that the Academy's not on the list right now, but that could help maybe if we could get some grants for the Academy. So if this would meet the police department's needs, I think it's a great idea, because I would venture to say that this building is in a lot better shape as it sits right now than when y'all took over the Old City Hall. I feel that confident about it. So again, my apologies for just, but I wanted to put that out there, because we are discussing this bond. You know, the input that we're, that I'm still getting from a lot of my citizens is, they'd like to see it shaved down even more, and I just in good faith had to go look at it and bring this to you. So I hope that we can set up a meeting to go look at it. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman Bradford.
Certainly, let me congratulate the councilman who took the decision to look at this property. But the question was, is it feasible for the use of the police? Chief, can you, I mean, we're just talking, you know, we're just conversating, but-
Well, you know, that's something-
I was gonna say, and Councilman, with this just coming to us, like-
I was gonna say, and Councilman, with this just coming to us, like, don't have, like, none of this is gonna be the law. We need to review this, and so I just wanna put that on the record before-
No, I guess, I guess my question, if I, if I had a question, it would be, I'm not familiar with police operations throughout cities. Is downtown a, a practical venue for police stations?
I'm not gonna say it can't be. I have a, just a, some concerns, but as the mayor said, I, I don't even wanna give an opinion. I'd like to look at the building. Um, parking is a huge issue. We have over three hundred marked police units, we have, have, have over two hundred unmarked police units, and that doesn't include us driving our personal vehicles to work and getting in those units. So parking is a real concern for us. Um, our car care facility is right across the street from the current police station. That might be a little bit of a difficulty. Um, just the amount of traffic that we have, our, our station's in a good location now because the streets that feed it, our only police officer's going down those streets, very little, whereas downtown, you got a lot of one-way streets, you have a lot of traffic. Um, so a lot of these, we'd really have to just look at the building and look at what parking might be available, and how would that affect downtown? You know, we've got, we've got five hundred and thirty-nine police officers today. We have another hundred and ten full-time classified and a hundred-plus part-time, um, positions, the people that come to the station at various parts of the building, so there's a lot of traffic.
And don't skip auxiliary. You got two or three auxiliaries.
And, and a very good auxiliary-
And possibly reserves.
And paters on patrol program.
And possibly, and possibly reserves, right?
Right. So we, we have a lot of people that feed the station. That's, that'd be one concern I would have, is how would that look downtown in streets that are already fairly occupied with other businesses?
And that's all I wanted to ask you, but I, let me ask the councilman, um, in regards to space, you, you think that could be used in a multi-purpose way?
Well, I, I believe definitely. I believe that you could move in fire prevention, state fire marshal, you could bring in FBI, I mean, you could, you could have that as a public safety building, I mean- How many square feet is it? It's about two hundred thousand square feet. Uh, it's, it's big. I mean, it's probably more than what you need, but for two million dollars, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it's a pretty good deal. Now, another thing that I was told by, by the gentleman that met me there, the old, uh, what is that, Councilman Nicholson, that, the, the parking garage behind Selbers, the old Selbers, it's, it's available for sale as well that could give you more parking space. So, and I think that where it's located, really, there's not much downtown other than, you know, south of there, uh, that parking lot backs up to the old Sportran bus station, which has been sold, and then south, there's not much there. So I, I envision the officers coming in from the back and being able to leave and, and do whatever they need to do. But I, I mean, I just could not, not bring this up whenever we're discussing, you know, spending twenty million dollars on a police station and, and we have that possibly available that would be, I feel like a good, a goodbye, but, I mean, you're, you're the professional, you know what you need, and I'm not trying to shove anything down your throat, but I feel like that we should, should at least look at it.
So let me ask one more question, Councilman. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with the properties that, that the city has. We, we all over Shreveport. Which, with, with, with looking at a property that we already have as an alternative to, to this, and then getting this building that we can, that we can utilize for various, 'cause it, I mean, we can actually shut down some, some offices-
That was my fault.
And put them in this building.
Right.
Would don't, may not require so much parking, uh, would be, would be, would be also an option, wouldn't it?
I, I feel like that we could, we could consolidate a lot of the buildings that we have. I don't remember what Ms. Regal said, but we have several hundred thousand square feet around town.
Yeah.
Uh, we could consolidate a lot of things in there, and there's some, some things that could go there on the, you know, the upper floors, but I just feel like that right now, to get, uh, my number one concern right now is getting the police officers out of that environment as soon as possible, and this building fits that need. But yes, sir, I do believe that it could be used for other, other things.
All right, Councilman Flurry.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Councilman Bradford, uh, before you get like a kid in, be, be thinking about, now, if you pull that property that's paying taxes now, you know, you love taxes, uh, to come in from corporate world, so if you take that property and we keep taking downtown and making it, uh, where it doesn't pay taxes, we might as well auction off downtown. Don't you agree?
So don't, don't be so-
Take it through now.
Everything that's good, good is ain't gold, huh?
Take it through.
Hey, this, this is just, but-
Take it through.
Councilman Flurry, think about the, think about the, think about the increased sales tax for the downtown area of people coming and spending money downtown.
Take it through.
A lot of, a lot of empty restaurants that those police officers could fill up every week, day in and day out.
Councilwoman Flurry.
You would need, thank you, Chair, you would need to calculate the ROI on all of that, on that revenue versus the occupancy and getting the taxes off of that, 'cause you're taking, you're not taking a building off LRB, off the tax rolls, you're taking one off of the tax rolls in my district. That's why you can't have a cookie. But I like everything else about what you've put, what you're saying, what you've presented today, but that is the one thing that concerns me, is that it does take a significant, uh, piece of real estate off of the tax rolls if we make it a government building. Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Ms. Jones?
Resolution one oh two, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and Burgundy Oaks LLC hereinafter called owner and acting herein through James A. Young, member for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Ridge Unit Thirteen. Resolution one oh three, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Burgundy Oaks LLC hereinafter called owner and acting herein through James A. Young, member for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Ridge Unit Number Fourteen. Authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Polestar LA, LA Shreveport Burcoons LLC hereinafter called owner and acting herein through Karen J. Hutton, CEO for the sanitary sewer main and related facilities to serve four twelve West Burcoons Industrial Loop. Resolution one oh five, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Enable Midstream Partners LP hereinafter called owner and acting herein through Deanna Farmer, Executive Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer for the Brooks Road Water Main Extensions and Related Appartnances. Resolution one oh six, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Southern Home Builders, Inc., hereinafter called owner and acting herein through Edward W. Gany, President for the sanitary sewer and water main extensions and related facilities to serve Newcastle Ponds Unit Number One.
No discussion? Ms. Jones, continue.
Ordinance ninety-nine, amending various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance one hundred, amending Division Five, Article Nine of Chapter Forty-two of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Food Truck Vendors. Ordinance one oh one, annexation tag number nineteen dash one, and ordinance to annex a tract of land in Section Three, and in Section Thirty-four, Caddo Parish, Louisiana into the limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance one oh two, annexation tag number nineteen dash two, and ordinance to annex several properties along Merriweather Road in Section Thirty-three, Caddo Parish, Louisiana into the limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance one oh three, annexation tag number nineteen dash three, and ordinance to annex a portion of Southern Loop roadway in Sections nineteen, twenty, twenty-nine, and thirty, Caddo Parish, Louisiana into the city limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance one oh four, annexation tag number nineteen dash four, and ordinance to annex property for the Novo Care Phase One subdivision in Section Eight, Caddo Parish, Louisiana into limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance one oh five, amending the, the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand nineteen capital improvements budget. Ordinance one oh six, amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter Ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances, city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to utilities.
All right, Councilman Butcher.
In reference to, uh, one oh three and one oh four, those are both annexations in my district, um, the Southern Loop annexation, um, is basically from the fire station to the other side of Wallace Lake Road. Uh, my understanding is the city owns that road and maintains it anyway, we just repaved it. Uh, we also do all the grass cutting up and down Southern Loop from Wallace Lake Road. Um, I think with the proposed, uh, traffic light that'll probably be on the agenda next, next council meeting, I believe that it's important that we take in that intersection there. Uh, we also have five hundred homes coming in at Providence, The Grove, which are in the city limits, so I think it's important that we annex that, that small little area there, and it's only a roadway that we already maintain and own, so it's not really any additional cost to the city. Uh, annex, annexation ordinance number one oh four is basically an annexation of a tract of land behind Cushes and the Barkstill Federal Credit Union. Um, there is a developer that is about to develop that, that property into a single-family residence and then a PUD-type development for commercial, um, which is good for, for our community. He's gonna, he's already tied, tied on to city water and sewer, and all the zoning has been passed, so, um, it is adjacent to everything else in the city. It's one of these holes that we've talked about, uh, so I'm, I'm asking my colleagues to support both of these annexations. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my comments regarding, uh, annexation, uh, one oh one. I wanna thank, uh, Andy Craig and his team for first, I guess it'll be three months ago, inviting me out to this site. Uh, I'm not a strong proponent of annexation, uh, especially when it takes us fifteen-plus miles outside of the inner core of the city. But this annexation is an easy lift from, for us if we chose to do it, because it sits directly in the middle of two neighborhoods that are already in the city limits, North Highlands and Lake Wood Estates. I always thought that, uh, Overland Sport Road, if you come down from, let's say, North Highlands, Trinity, Trinity Church, uh, in the back of it, uh, is where the property is. Modest family dwellings is being proposed, uh, which would add to, I think, the quality of, uh, of, uh, living for that area, which I think would also increase, uh, business and commercial development. Uh, like I say, if you, it's not a, it's not a very difficult hookup because of where, where it sits directly in the, in the middle of two already established neighborhoods. I'm asking your support of it, I think, again, that, uh, we talked about, uh, being prudent and, and looking at the scenarios of what we can do to, to, uh, increase our, our cities and, and as well as quality of life. This would be, I think, a, a very wise and, and, and needed annexation for that North Shreveport area. We, we're just not annexing or having the, the development that we should up there, but this would, I think, will trigger and be a catalyst for additional development in that area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
I, um, I'm familiar with this project as well, and, and I think that knowing the developer and the, uh, the number of homes that they've put on the ground in Shreveport and Bossier, that this will be a huge shot in the arm to District A, I believe. So I'm very much for this. I think with the proximity to I-49 and, and where it's located in, I'm, I'm glad to see that that development's going in, and it'll be, it'll be a top-notch development.
Oh, no question about it. As well as, it, you get a view of Red River, but it's not in a flood zone.
That's good.
Very well put.
Oh, golly. All right, if there's no other discussion on that, Ms. Jones, continue. Still can read about that.
Ordinance seventy-eight, amending Section Twenty-six dash two twenty affidavit attesting that city contract was not secured through employment or payment of solicitor to Chapter Twenty-six Finance, Article Six Contracts, Division One, generally of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to requirement of an affidavit for city contracts. Ordinance eighty, amending Section Ten dash eighty-four of Chapter Ten of the Code of Ordinances, relative to physical separation of sales of high alcohol content liquor for consumption off the premises. Ordinance eighty-seven, amending the two thousand nineteen capital improvements budget. Ordinance eighty-eight, amending the two thousand nineteen capital improvements budget. Ordinance eighty-nine, amending the two thousand nineteen budget funding contractual services provided by, to Sportran by Metro Management Associates, Inc. Ordinance ninety, amending two thousand nineteen downtown entertainment district fund budget. Ordinance ninety-one, amending Chapter Seventy-four of Article Three, Section Seventy-four dash fifty-three of the Code of Ordinances regarding collection for higher annual permit fees. Ordinance ninety-one, amending Chapter One, general provisions of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to two misdemeanor offenses. Ordinance ninety-three, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property located at eight eighty Texas Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh one in Caddo Parish to Caddo Management. Ordinance ninety-four, amending Section Twenty-six dash two seventy-four, execution of contracts associated with purchases of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance ninety-five, amending Section Two dash two, city vehicles of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance ninety-six, zoning case number nineteen dash three twenty-eight C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Shreveport-Lantern Highway at the intersection of North Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport-Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R.A. Rural Agricultural District to I-two Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance seventy, excuse me, ordinance ninety-seven, zoning case number nineteen dash three thirty-seven C, and ordinance to rescind ordinance one twenty-nine of two thousand seventeen and to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast side of Fourth Street, approximately five hundred and eighty feet east of Marshall Street, Shreveport-Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I.M.U. Industrial Mixed, Mixed Use District to I-two Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance ninety-eight, zoning case number nineteen dash three forty-three C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Municipal Pier Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty feet east of Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport-Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to R-one seven Single Family Residential to O.S. Open Space District.
All right, Councilman Butcher.
On, uh, ordinance number eighty, uh, tomorrow, I'm, I'm gonna withdraw that, uh, or withdrawing, we can do that, correct? Just withdraw it?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw that.
Okay. Councilman, I mean, uh, clerk?
On number seventy, ordinance number seventy-eight, uh, the amendment to ordinance number seventy-eight has already been adopted, so the motion on that tomorrow will be to adopt as amended. That was a technical amendment that you had, this barment versus de-barment, I believe.
Okay. Councilman Green.
On ninety-five, on ninety-five, did I understand that to be a cleanup ordinance, uh, if, if I may? Hey, Councilman Green, about two months ago, I asked our internal auditor to identify for me recommendations that she had in the past made to the council that had not been adopted, and one of the things she pointed out was that we had administrative procedures, uh, that said city employees could take, uh, cars so many miles beyond the city limits, and we had a statute that said something different. And so this, the purpose of this ordinance is to make the statute consistent with the procedures and, and the practice.
So, Mr. Mayor, and also to Chief, does this interfere with anything that you all would have an issue with as far as city vehicles?
No, sir. It doesn't change anything. It just cleans up the ordinance to match what our internal policies are.
Oh, okay. They've been, they've been doing this for years, but they had an ordinance that said that we couldn't do it, and so just, just clean them, nothing-
That also goes, uh, towards the chief and police officers.
It applies to all city vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
It hasn't bothered mine, though. You guys said it.
Do you have a position there for Councilman? I'm doing something wrong.
Councilman, neither said it.
Councilman Lewis. All right, thank you, Councilman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on, on ordinance ninety, which has us taking three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our operating reserve and using it to, to make some repairs that I think we can all agree are necessary, I'll just direct this question to Ms. Jones, is there anywhere else we can take that money from besides the operating reserve? Because I, I just, one of the things that keeps me up at night with this, this part-time-
Because I, I just, one of the things that keeps me up at night with this, this part-time job is, is the fact that we are, you know, on the board of directors of an organization that has just a very razor-thin margin of error because of our tiny operating reserve. If there's some other pot of money from which we can take that, I, I sure would prefer that.
Yeah, and this doesn't touch the general fund. It's, and Ms. Regal, again...
These are the Red River Entertainment District operating funds. This is not our general fund.
Okay, how much, how much, how much do we have in that operating reserve?
Once we take this out, I think we estimate to be about 135...
135,000?
135,000. It was about 500,000 before.
So we, we're going to use two-thirds of our, our operating reserve for, for this fund, for this?
Yes. All the roofs are at the point, they need to be replaced. We're actually losing some revenue because we have tenant spaces that are leaking. And then we had an air conditioner go out at the Nikki's space. It's a twenty-plus-year-old site, so we're lucky to have these funds to be able to do repairs and maintenance.
I know we don't have any choice about making the repairs, and I'm glad they'll be done, but I just, this is just another example of the fact that we really have got to do all the work we can this budgeting cycle to beef up our reserves for all the funds for which you're responsible. Thank you.
So, so let me ask Shelley before we go. And I, I, I was totally, I was in a meeting with the mayor's office, and the guy that came in to meet with us made me aware of these funds. I'm like, where'd that, where'd that fund come from? But anyway, are these funds dedicated for the purpose of entertainment district, or, or...
I'll have to go back and read the ordinance, what the TIF says. I don't want, I don't think I want to, it was created for that district to collect tax revenues after we built the entertainment district that could be spent in that area.
Right. So repurposing it, is this the proper ordinance to do that?
Well, this is...
I guess I need to ask the attorney.
I think we are, this does spend the money within the district.
Are you asking repurpose all of the money, or the money to be used for these roof repairs?
Roof repairs are outside of the entertainment district.
No, sir, they're inside the entertainment district.
All the roof repairs are inside the entertainment district.
Yes, this is for the tenant spaces in the Red River Entertainment District.
Oh, we don't have a problem.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, we don't have a problem.
Table legislation, okay. Have any other appeals today?
We have two appeals tomorrow, Larkin appeals on two of his developments. And we also have an executive session today concerning an appeal of two cases that Larkin filed suit against us some time ago. And those two cases were concluded in District Court, and he's filed an appeal to the Court of Appeals, so we'll be discussing the appeal to the Court of Appeals.
And that's after, that's immediately after, okay, so we have, we have a motion for this?
I'll make, I'll make motion.
We have no...
Public standards is not a table, not a, not a... We have any public standards?
We're ready to move forward.
Pretty much any of the reports are from Officer Board and Committee. Seeing C. W., that was a first report. Ended additional communications from the mayor, City Council.
So I second the motion going to Dave Sexton.
Been moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Bradford. This meeting, do we have a vote? Let's get a vote. Councilman Flurry, Fuller.
I thought I did.
No, Flurry.
Flurry.
It's the only reason we should have put us next to each other.
And motion carries at six and one out of ten. This means a draw.